You're watching Access to La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 19th meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting at www accessesuportcounty.org.
All right, so it's 5:34, calling in our meeting to order. And we're going to commission for women. Thank you so much for being here. Say that again. Oh, today's date is January 19th, 2022.
Twiki.
Twenty-three. Okay, good start. We're off to a good start today. Okay, roll call. Let's see, that would be the secretary, but we haven't voted our new secretary yet. So we want to do Bell Lee.
Present.
Albertine Allen, present. Bonnie Schaeff, present. Sarah Jones, present. Veronica Martin, present. Christina Isabel here. Fay Moore, no. And Lynn Conley, no. And our city, yes, that's correct. Linda, is it Linda or Lynn?
Linda. She goes by Lynn, so she prefers Lynn.
Because I thought she introduced herself as Lynn the other day. Great. We are on to the approval of our minutes from December 15th.
I make a motion we approve the minutes of December 19th, 15th.
Twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two.
And then second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no, I'm going to take this directly, then, a copy, because I have not been so good at getting them approved minutes. Or somehow, well, what will?
I was gonna say just sign it and then drop them off.
That's what I'm gonna do. Although it's not my job. We're not here in a second. The treasurer's report.
And we love you.
Well, I'm not the treasurer yet. Oh, that's right.
That's all right.
Can I make a motion that we change the agenda so we can elect officers before we continue on with this meeting?
Yes.
All in favor?
A second.
All right. All in favor? Great, so we were going to elect our officers. Do we have that committee? Do we need to do it through committee, through that, or?
Is it all of the officers?
Yes.
It is all of the officers.
We are in place. We're in place. He's in place.
Also, you can run it.
Okay.
Yep, you can just do the election of the officers or ask for nominations.
Okay.
And just state the name of the office and then just open it up.
Okay. So the position. I'm sorry, put it order. We did have a nominating committee. Yes, that's what I was. That we had already organized. Yeah. And so there were already nominations on the floor. Yes. And so nominations.
I think we did that in November, because I was here for that.
Yeah. So we had nominated myself to continue on as president and Albertine Allen will continue on as vice president. We needed to fill the secretary position and our only nominee at this moment is Bell Lee. Is there anyone else that would be interested in that position? Great, and all in favor of Bell Lee being our secretary? Aye. And. Thank you. And we need to elect our treasurer at this point. We have one person in the nomination and that is Bonnie. Is there anyone else?
Can I make a motion that we approve Bonnie as the treasurer?
Great.
A second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, I have a question. Yes. We didn't do the same thing.
Well, let me ask a question. This was presented by the nomination committee, so you didn't really have to have a first, because it was a recommendation from the committee. You just opened it up to see if there were any other people, but you didn't have to do it. You can do it, but you don't have to do it.
Okay.
Because it was recommended through committee.
Okay.
Were you interested in?
No.
No, no. No, it's true though, man. I was just checking.
I just wanted to make sure. You're right, you know, because I noticed that there.
So before we go back to the treasurer's report, I'll just go over what the positions entail. I'm just gonna read it out loud so that we all know. The chair president writes the agenda and sends to secretary, who sends to E. Michigan City and catalyst contacts for posting. We need to post the meeting agenda within seven meeting days. Seven days of the meeting. And the law, it is 48 hours. The chair prepares the annual report for presentation to the city council on the second week of March. Chair prepares report by December for presentation by vice chair in March. Chair conducts meetings. Vice chair runs meetings in chair's absence, covers treasurer reports and treasurer's absence. Secretary takes notes and minutes at every meeting, submits a draft of the minutes to the commissioners within 72 hours post-meeting, approved at the following meeting and within 48 hours sent to E. Michigan City contacts. Treasurer. You are required for the annual report based on treasury reports, prepares report, submits forms to controllers with a copy of invoice and letter of request, approves amount to controllers, submits a monthly report at meetings. Sorry, I need my glasses for this one. Enter request after meeting and submit to controller 10 days prior to board of work, to our, before our board meeting, which is the first and third of the Mondays of the month. Balance and review general ledger. Vice chair covers if treasurer is absent. You have the annual report in December and pass all materials to new elected officials by January for February transition. So there's a little bit of difference as we do this for the president and secretary, because right now I've been sending the agendas and the minutes. So that's just a little change, but we can work that out. Great. Since it's the new year, I'd just like to start off by rereading what our mission is, so that we know our purpose and intent, so it can be clear. The purpose of this commission is to ensure that women and men have equal opportunity to function fully and optimally as citizens of the city, as equal participants in the economy, in politics and government, in education and social development, in the system of justice and all other facets of life. Our aim and goal is to increase awareness and understanding of the status of women, the needs of women and their families, and the issues women face, identify available resources and services meeting their needs and the gaps that remain in existing services, monitor, review and provide balanced analysis of federal, state and local policy for its impact on city women, and to make recommendations regarding those policies to the Human Rights Department for appropriate action to ensure women's equality. Stimulate and encourage legislation for the development of social services of particular benefit to women, allowing them to become better educated, better connected to their communities, better aware of resources and opportunities, and better engaged in resolving the challenges they face. Advocate for pay equity, better healthcare, affordable quality childcare, better workplace environments with no sexual harassment, and other issues identified in listening sessions of the Indiana Commission for Women. Issue public educational materials in the result of research, legislative review and investigations in order to educate the entire community as to the aims and goals of the commission. Establish and maintain close working relationships with Michigan City Human Rights Department and Human Rights Commission, the La Porte County League of Women Voters, and other women's advocacy groups and other state, local and federal programs that relate to the needs and opportunities of women. Good. So I just wanted to start there. Make sure that we all read this and if you need a copy of it, that we can get this to you so that we all kind of understand. I will go over attendance policies. You can only miss three meetings in one year. If you tell us where you're sharing this. This is. This is our ordinance number 4167. And I believe this is on our, on our site underneath our commission for women. So you can locate this information. And when I was rereading this the other day, I was like, well, we really are doing a lot of that this year. And I'm really excited for what we have coming up. Does anyone have anything I want to say about that, our mission? Great. The next thing, so let me read that, we're on to C, hybrid Zoom options. So last week, Bell and I went over to the old school, just called something else. Central School. And we, so we can have our meetings there where we could utilize the hybrid Zoom option. So we just need to make a vote of that to make that change. There's a little bit of paperwork involved, but that's not, we can have it done by the next meeting. So I just want to get people's opinions of that move, that change. If we're in favor of that, any discussion at this time?
So what room would we be meeting in?
In the Elko, like, oh, we took a picture of it.
We did.
I took a picture.
Yeah.
It's a very nice meeting room, long table. It does have windows. And we could project things, so actually in our meetings, if we wanted to have a PowerPoint, or if we initiate the guest speakers again, that we'd be able to have PowerPoint presentations, which I think would be really, really nice too.
Is the policy that we would start meeting there all the time? So that we would have Zoom accessibility?
Yes.
So is there another meeting, is there another meeting going on in the chambers?
There's not.
That's what, so that's why I thought we were going to be meeting in the chambers.
Well, yes, and Fay had, like, during COVID time, had moved us down into that space, according to Chris.
Right.
But Gail has us in here. And we, but to do the Zoom, they would, Drew and team would really recommend that we do it over there versus the city council chamber. The thing that I, I mean, I like that we're intimate here and at that, over there, we would be in a table that could be a bit more intimate versus in the city hall chamber where we can't even see each other. But I'll do whatever anyone's, you know.
I like the hybrid Zoom, especially if you're gonna follow the attendance policy. And I think that with weather and things that come up, I think having the hybrid option is just better.
Yeah. Yeah, because Fay had hurt her foot, she could be here tonight.
Right.
So.
Are there many city meetings at Elko? I mean, that just normally?
They're starting to do that. I think it's just more accessible for them and makes it easier for them. And since they're supporting us and helping us, I mean, I like hybrid. I think, because there's a couple, I can, that's why I've called on the phone.
Yeah.
Because I'm like, I can be there, but I need to be on Zoom, so.
And like, with me, with where I'm working and the hours that I take and stuff like that, a lot of times I can't make it here.
Yeah.
So that would be perfect. I could always get on the phone or something.
There is a two, two in a row meeting on Zoom.
Yep.
Policy.
Yep. Unless it's, unless it's, unless it's a health issue.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the only reason why, with the whole being able to be seen and heard on votes, but that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
So like, if you were somewhere and you couldn't, you need to turn your camera off, you can't. You can turn your, keep your camera off, but for votes, you just need to be seen and heard. That's it. So like, if you sit in the office, you don't want people seeing all your stuff, you can just turn your camera on for your vote and turn it back off.
There you go.
Is there a limit in one year's time? Or is it just the two in a row is the?
Two in a row is what I.
Then you could.
And if you have a health-related matter, that two in a row doesn't, it doesn't apply.
Great.
Yeah.
And I want to, is there a specific no vote allowed for budgetary issues if you're on Zoom?
So budgetary, you can't be, you can't be virtual to vote. So you can be at the meeting, but you can't vote if it's virtual. But we don't really have, so you got, you really don't have, you make recommendations, but your budget.
So we're, so we're people who encourage people to write grants to us. And so in order for some of that discussion and those votes to be passed, they still would have to be present in order for us to conduct that business. So we'd have to conduct it now.
Not to approve of grants and stuff, you don't.
Not just budget stuff.
Our budget. Our budget, so.
Yes.
So when, so because we encourage people to, we have money we want to give away. We keep saying that over and over. I can vote virtually to.
To support it.
To support that, even though it's a budgetary issue.
It's.
And that's my confusion, if that's why.
You guys have a budget for things. You can vote on the budget to give away the grants. And that, you vote on that, and then you allow the grant committee to make a recommendation.
Right.
And then they make a recommendation to the board of those grants. So there's a couple of different things. It's a little different because you're not a fiscal body like the council.
Right.
You're a board and commission, so it's a little bit different. So I would say that, and I'll ask Jewel, our attorney, this, but I think because there are recommendations that you're making for grants and that's your budget pool, that's a little bit different than us voting for an appropriation of funds.
Okay, thank you.
Because that was.
What about then for, like, the expenses of our event in March? That, that we could vote on here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Without having to be, I mean, we could do it even if we're virtual.
Yeah.
Hopefully you have at least two.
You have a form and then whoever's virtual would just say, I support it.
Oh, okay.
And then.
So you could still have the vote as long as there was enough people in person.
Yeah, you still gotta have 50% of your people here in person. Yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha. So that virtual person would not count towards that.
I would say, I would say if you want, you want to have, you gotta have a quorum here.
Okay.
In person. You gotta have a quorum in person.
Okay. Would we like to bring that vote to the table?
I move that we change our meetings to meet at.
IBE. IBE.
Oh, IBEW on 8th Street every month. And that we allow Zoom meetings. We allow commissioners to attend by Zoom, not more than two times in a row unless for a health reason, but no limit for the years.
And what I would add to that and just say that adopting the Board of Works policy. Just say.
Yes.
I would add, and then we can just make the.
Because that's what I'm.
That we adopt any policy that the Board of Works has adopted for hybrid meetings.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And I'm almost certain we adopted that. Maybe we didn't have a form or something.
Well, no, we adopted it, but we didn't do the paperwork. So that's why we had to do it.
Oh, okay.
So now I have, I have the right paperwork. I can do it. Okay. And that will not start until the paperwork is filed, so next month will be.
You voted on it.
I think that, I think it will happen in February. So February will be this. I will, I, I'll let you guys know if there's any difference. Yeah. Great. And then Angie, this is just a reminder that we do need a city council appointee. And I'm sorry we didn't let you know that.
What do you mean?
In December, I, I don't know. We need a city council appointee for the commission.
Oh, we have to replace someone, don't we?
Yeah.
But we haven't received any forms.
No.
The city council has to receive forms. So if somebody, if some.
I thought you guys found us the person, but we still find a person.
Some people have to, so anybody from the community who would like to be on the Women's Commission or any commission, they have to fill out a form and submit it to the clerk's office. And then we would vote on it at the council meeting.
See, we did it wrong at the last meeting because there was a guest here and Fay nominated her to be on the commission, but we didn't follow the proper procedures.
Well, she turned her form.
Well, I think you, based on your ordinance, though, you, the commissioners have an appointment.
Yeah, that will be our appointment. Yes. Who's being replaced is our former secretary.
Okay, so we need to have a form.
So, yeah, anybody.
So we still need to, we need to really reach out to the community, basically.
She represented something in the nonprofit or, or help or something. There's a list in the.
Who was that?
Nicole.
Yeah.
Nicole represented some, I don't think nonprofit.
So I thought she was just the city council appointee.
She was, but they asked.
But she was a nonprofit.
But she had to be, she had to fit that too, I think, before the city council would have.
Okay, so Team, you still got to do some research.
Okay.
Let people know that we're, we're looking for one more. Got lots of fun things to do. And that's gonna lead me into the long-range focus of the 2024 commissioner turnover. I just want to, like, get this out now and then we have a larger turnover at this moment. We have like three people, four people leaving. So we need to start considering what it is, who do we need, you know, on the commission? Is there an age range that we're missing? Is there something that we're lacking that would help us kind of round ourselves out? So I just want to, I just want to put that in your ears now so that we can really start looking in a different way. Does anyone know? Can you send something to me to say, like Bonnie was saying, like, I'm education? What was, what are the positions that need to be filled? Like, what's the specifics? On our, okay. So I don't want to invite somebody and then they don't fit the bill.
I do agree. So the Nicole Coleman, that's why I was gonna call. Was a city council appointment and it's listed under nonprofit women issues. And that's actually on our Michigan City website.
Yep.
And so, and then the commission itself had an appointment and we voted in Linda Fay Conley, who refers to be called Lynn. And that was at our last meeting. And so the person needs to fit the bill for.
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit.
Okay.
And men and women are welcome to serve on this board.
That's right.
On this board of commissioners, yes. We welcome all.
Okay, so she was nonprofit women's issues. So to be, you know, we're doing a lot of outreach right now. Maybe there's gonna be someone that we meet in March that would be, well, hopefully we meet her before then. But that's interesting. Okay.
Thank you.
For all people interested, the form to set on boards and commissions is available on E. Michigan City, their website. The form is very simple to fill out. It is easy. And lots of boards and commissioners are always looking for people to set on them and join. And so even if you're not appointed to the commission itself, you may be able to set on some of their subcommittees and still be able to work within that commission that you're interested in. You don't have to be a commissioner to be a part of the work.
And the forms are also available on the clerk's office. If you just want to fill it out and drop it off.
Yep, thank you. So basically, we have three members appointed by the mayor, two members shall be appointed by the common council, one member from the NAACP, one member from the La Porte County Minority Health Coalition, and one member from the La Porte County League of Women Voters. And one member shall be appointed by the other eight members. And terms are four years. One of them is, there's, there is a two-year term as well.
Is that me?
Yeah.
I think that's me. Can't remember, but I'm pretty sure that was.
There's a two-year what?
There's.
Oh, term.
Yes.
Can you speak up?
I think that's me, is the two, the two-year. Well, actually, as I'm looking at it, it's funny. It says a fixed term of four, but then it also says initially they're two years. So it's renewable for four more. Because I need two years after. Yeah. So then I'm good for two.
According to the website, Sarah Jones, December 22nd of 2025, the term expires. Because then there's a back four.
All the years run together. So Bonnie is up in December, Albertine and myself, actually. Anybody else is up? Fay, Fay is also up.
Fay's up and she's from the NAACP.
Yeah.
All this information is available on our website.
Yeah. So.
For those that don't.
Great. Some exciting updates for the Women's International Day. Anyone want to lead us there? Anything? Okay, well, March. March 8th is International Women's Day. The International Women's Day theme is embrace equity. We are going to do a roundtable luncheon with five organizations that deal with women's healthcare and children's healthcare in our area. And have, hopefully, an attendance of up to 7,500 people. The idea of this is to create conversation within organizations to find out what's going on in our community, what we have to offer for people to share and to kind of network within our community at that event. We really want to invite women that are directly affected into this conversation to the table and hear from everybody. So, so we can find out what, what our needs are, you know, what we're missing. There was a very interesting article in The New York Times about St. Louis just released, like, a large sum of money for a doula program in St. Louis. And it is extremely helpful. It has been doing some great work. And so I know we only have one in town.
We have one doula here.
One doula, so I think that might be.
She serves part of Rolling Prairie, Goshen, Elkhart, Michigan City.
And they use the American Recovery Plan money for that program, right? So I'm also just curious of where we are putting that money because we could, there's programs that we could, we're gonna find out what's needed and where we can support. And I think the doula program is probably one of the biggest ones that we could affect. And we have invited her to speak as one of the main speakers at the roundtable event. Her name is.
Susan Ian Monado.
Susan Monado.
So I have a question with regarding the doula program. Do they also offer education on people, for people who want to become a doula?
In this St. Louis program, they do. They're training as well as.
They go to training. They have a certain amount of training they have to take. And then some of them are required to be bilingual. Susan speaks three or four. And there may be three classes and three courses she had to take in order to become a doula. She just wasn't, you know, got the job, but she had to be trained and then her background had to help with that too. So she's been a doula for, I want to say, three years, maybe four.
Okay, so if I wanted to help guide someone to that program, should I send them to you? Because I do, so who do I send them to?
Minority Health Coalition out of Indianapolis is the base for the program. And that's where they hire doulas. I don't know about the training or all of that because I'm not a doula, but I just know that she works out of our office. And then she serves these counties, La Porte, Elkhart. I think she went someplace else around here, but she goes, she travels all over. And then she goes in for, when the mom goes in for birth, she's there. She stays through. Sometimes she, a person that can't speak English, so she translates with the doctor and stuff, so.
I think what we're finding from research is that it works, that it is successful, that women are surviving their pregnancies. And, and since we in Northwestern Indiana do have a high percentage of maternal mortality, it's probably a program that should be expanded to just one person. So.
Can you tell us what doula is?
I'm trying to think. There is, there are doulas in South Bend. There are doulas in Kokomo, I think it is. I'm trying to think. There is, there are duelists in South Bend. There are duelists in Kokomo, I think it is. They're they're spread all over, all over the state through the Indiana Minority Health. And so. I don't know all of them, but I know when we have our meetings or whatever, they're on our our Tuesday morning.
Oh, okay.
And so, yeah.
Good. So she'll be there to to share that that um information on our March event. Um, we're still waiting to hear back. We, Albertine and I did submit the letter to organizations and um. Um, so we're still waiting for that. Uh, right now, we're potentially looking at the um. Um, Port Visitors Bureau as our location for the luncheon and we will supply the lunch for all attendees.
Who is gonna cater it? Do we know yet?
We don't know that yet.
Okay.
To be determined. Yeah. So that's where we are with that. Anyone else that was, has anything to say with that?
Location.
I went, I found an agency in the old St. Anthony's building that I didn't know was here. It was prenatal. And um there's another one. I can't remember the name. I have written on my table.
When we, when we met there, somebody spoke to us that was from the program. I was shocked.
Pace program.
Yeah, I was shocked that it was, I had never heard of it.
So Pace is really new to the Indiana um area. I think Pace has been around for seven years. And Pace is integrated care where people can get all their care under one um. In one facility. And not only um is, so St. Anthony's runs a program, right? And Pace is not only the payer, they are also the payee. So processing takes people normally thirty days to get into that program and fully integrated. Versus six months in other programs where, um and so. We toured their facility um and they're, they gave a wonderful tour and they're open to give tours. As well as open meeting spaces that are available as part of their uh public charter.
Yeah, but they shared with us this program.
Yes.
That's the, that, that um.
So the WIC, so the WIC office and as well as their prenatal programs are also being housed in that building. They're trying to not only reach our. Seniors, but also our infants. But because they realize that there are problems um with infant mortality in our community. And they're trying to do the little pieces that they can, where they can.
They offer space for all that, but you got to remember, you've got to be in a position to meet the people where they are and not over there.
Sure.
The atmosphere has got to be where they feel welcome to come into whatever facility you're in. You have to go to the public and not.
That's where we are right now. I hear what you're saying, Ms. Uh. Ms. Amy. Uh and we, we will have to use what we have until we can do better, right? And I was just sharing some information about availability and not realizing we, we've been talking about these since Martin Luther King. We have been, you know. We've been talking about the same issues for fifty, sixty years about inequity uh within our healthcare system and across the board. And so we have to start where we are. Um and so if they're not doing better, maybe.
Have they come to the, have, I I don't remember the name of it.
Pace.
Pace, so.
So Pace covered the prenatal too?
No, 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 no.
I'm talking about prenatal.
Prenatal. I didn't know they were in there. I went in to see the WIC program and then I saw this sign that said prenatal and I said, well, let me follow the sign. And I went on into and knocked and went in the office and uh she, we talked a few minutes. She said, we've been here a couple of years.
A couple of years?
Yeah.
But again, how do we, no one knows about it.
Advertisement for that. And the other part of that is when we first started with prenatal, it was upstairs at St. Anthony's on the. Fifth floor. And that is where I did my program with the ladies that were in. Uh up there for, you know, being pregnant, birth control and whatever. And so now it's called prenatal. I haven't seen anything about it until I went in the hospital.
Yeah. So again, this is the reason why we're having this round table is that we don't know. People don't know. So how can we, you know, as we continue to build that resource list, this is gonna help us kind of uh find out what's here.
We gave them a letter of invite.
So we've invited them and we um, so our first round of invites was just to the speakers and then we're gonna send the broader invite to the community. Anything else for that one? All right, um.
We need to circle back around to our treasurer's report.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. I'm gonna jump back to the treasurer's report because we did not do that.
I do not, I'm not aware of any changes to it since last month. Um, I think that I, I don't know. I guess Char was still the treasurer until today. I don't know. But the balance as of December that I believe is unchanged was twenty two thousand eight hundred seventy six dollars ninety two cents. That's all I have.
I don't think we've dispersed any.
We have one.
We voted on the dispersing in December for the.
For the NAACP's, the Black History Month.
It's not.
It's not, sorry, it's not. It's the Black History.
Two hundred fifty dollars. Oh, reminder, Char submitted that um to the controller.
So we need to double check that.
I'm looking to see if it's in your minutes because they will need the minutes that it says that and.
Yeah, I think it's.
Commission is under Commissioner Comment, section eleven.
Yeah, there it is.
The silver level at the two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, so we just have to turn this into the controller's office and offer.
Okay.
Paperwork.
So we have, um, did Fay give us the form that?
The form, yeah. With his money. Do you have a copy of the form located in uh Miss Char's will be packet?
Um, the submission forms.
The commission form for the controller, I do have that, but I don't have something from the um, the the NAACP.
It's not NAACP.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and it's listed in our minutes in section eleven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Subsections for.
A.
Black History.
Oh, yeah. We need something that shows the two, the sponsorship.
Yes.
Yeah.
We, that was included in the sponsorship letter that went out initially. So if you don't have it, I can send it cause I had it.
Okay, yeah, if you could send it, yeah. Leak motions to sponsor events at the, the event for Black History Month at the silver level for two hundred and fifty dollars. Coleman seconds all approve. Okay, that's enough.
Okay, but you would need the name of who you're writing this out to.
Right.
That's on our sponsor.
Yeah, so I, and I'll circle back around, I'm sorry.
So we'll, we'll be getting that to you and.
Cause I was just delivering notes on behalf of this.
Uh, so do we have a motion to approve the?
I'll make a motion that we approve the treasurer's report.
Your second.
Oh, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for that. Um, all right, so this is just an Indiana State Commission collaboration. Um, many of you know, I've been having monthly meetings with them uh with. The Monroe um Commission for Women as well. Um, we had a really fantastic call and. We are proposing that we would do a breakout session um at the Indiana Women's Conference in November. To talk about what commissions are and volunteer work um as a breakout session and then a second. Uh breakout session about empowerment programs for women in our state. And trying to make more commissions for women in our state so that there can be more uh support for women. Um, on top of that, we've, they've thrown out the idea of a. Multi-women's commission meeting in either May or June, like an annual retreat. Um, I would really, I'm going to propose that we have it here.
What month? I'm sorry.
In May or June. So that's in the works. Nothing to to firm or anything like that at this moment.
It's your idea.
Yes.
And when is the Indiana Conference?
Um, I don't have any dates of anything other than that the Women's Commission, the Indiana Women's Conference is in November. We talked about um creating empowerment programs, this isn't my idea actually. Of creating empowerment programs throughout the state and trying to reach two thousand and twenty four women. And so then the following year in November, we would have either at the and. Commission, the Indiana State Conference or our own thing. We don't know yet. Again, this is all just brainstorming and communication, right? Um, of bringing those women together for something. Um, it is an election year, so we got a lot of work um to reach those girls and women throughout our state. So um, that's just an update there. And if anyone wants to be involved more with that, please. Let's do it.
Are you looking for a sub?
Maybe we should form a subcommittee on that. Um, which brings us down to that Girls Women Leadership Program brainstorm, our next um immediate item. Um, so through these conversations and through us talking in a couple of months ago. About the idea of like a youth empowerment program. Um, I've reached out to um Sheila, Atias over who runs the leadership program at PNW. They are very interested in collaborating with us on a program, but what do we want? What do we want? I mean, what are, what are we thinking? You know, before we can go into any kind of collaboration, we have to have some ideas of what we'd like to do. Um, and there are a number of programs. Belle and I have been looking up another program called Girls Inc. Um, which has quite a lot of success. They're out of Indianapolis. Um, is it developing something new? Is it uh finding something that's here? Um, when I think about this empowerment, I also think about the League of Women Voters and all the great work that you guys are doing, like that. Kind of empowerment programs, you know, like, I know we can't support that financially or anything like that, but maybe in the larger scope. Of the twenty twenty four plan, that that could be a big uh companion with this.
I would say though, I mean, even with the League of Women Voters, you could have um the, the Michigan City Drifters. It's another women's organization. And I would say that um.
The high school, high school.
Well, they, we do whatever the Drifters does. They, it's not just a high school, but. The Grand Michigan City Drifters is a women's service organization. But we, we were doing um a lot around scholarship and college readiness. But we support the women shelters. We do whatever. We, I mean, it's a um nonprofit. But small group membership organization, but my, my, my thing for women's empowerment, I think there's two things. Um, self-esteem is one and there's Dove and there's so many programs that. You can, we can do. Um, and then also um STEM. I mean, I think we got two things that are probably truly important, but um the self-esteem, the self-esteem. And image, body image, um all those things I feel like are super important. I know that um our organization we're part of that I want them to do more here. Um, the Lynx, we, we're doing a. Girls um uh every month is a different thing that we're collecting for the young ladies and we do the care packages and things for. Then because just understand that um as girls, we have different needs. And some of us, um when we were younger, our families couldn't afford some of those things.
Yeah.
And so it's important for there to be a supply at all of the schools, at the elementary, junior high.
Yeah.
And that's something that we could do easily, you know, um as a drive and maybe get support from some of the stores. But um not having the proper um sanitary items. It, it, it's embarrassing and it's something that is not talked about and maybe, I know that Dove program is really nice. Um, um, so when I became a link years ago, over ten years ago, our service project, we went to the YWCA. And we did a, we um did, used that program to present to the women and their kids that were in the shelter. And um, and it's, it's, it's a good program. So there's a lot of stuff.
This is great, that's great.
You know, it's like one of the girls that Angie helped, was to a hand, Angie helped out when they went off to college. They go off to college not knowing what they need. And so we need to be a support team there. Uh, if they have enough energy and will thought to, to wanna go off to school, then we should be able to help them. And we're helping a girl right now that didn't have funds to get her books. See, sometimes you read things and it's a misconception. I thought that the. Uh Twenty First Century paid for everything. It does not. She had to get a Pell Grant to pay for others' thing for her books or whatever. So it just doesn't cover everything. So you think, well, they got the Twenty First Century guy, they all good to go. That's not true.
It doesn't pay for the sanitary. So, so I think there's some opportunities, books, sanitary, all that stuff, so I.
Hygiene items and stuff, you know, like she has to have that covered. So we're in the process now and I think we could adopt maybe two or three students. That are first time college students in that family and help them out. Cause sometimes the parents don't understand that either.
Right. They don't. So we're in a new place all by yourself.
Um, also, the Boys and Girls Club um does have a girls um program, national program. I'm, I'm. Not sure if they are doing it at our current Boys and Girls Club. Just because I've been there in so long, but that could be someone you wanna connect with too. I know they do a national girls program. Do they have to pay to, to become a member for the Boys and Girls Club? Um, they used to, but it was like five dollars a year, but I think I read, I'd say I read something that. Changed that.
See, we don't want them to join somewhere they got to pay. Maybe we could pay the fee.
It's five dollars for the, it was five dollars for the whole year, but I think, I think, I wanna say I read something that that has changed.
Okay.
To free, but I, I'm, I don't wanna say it is cause I don't remember. I just, I, I wanna say I came across something. But that was, like I said, that was for the whole year, but that could have changed.
I believe Joanne mentioned that a few times and said that until they, that they had to. Charge that five dollars a year because that was their buy-in and then the kids were committed to coming and to participating.
So see now, it's the YMCA there, is the YMCA at the Boys and Girls Club. A lot of things we need to know soon when we start to um venture out to try to help the kids because sometimes it's. Not gonna be possible. We may run out of money.
And they're separated.
Well, and the, you know, the interesting thing though is there was that one grant. It is still a floating grant that's still available. For organizations. So if there is an organization that we are like, you know, this, maybe they don't know about the, the um. That proposal, which I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the name, but I can send that to everyone. Um, no, it is a, it's a, it's a big grant. You get, I think it's seventy five hundred dollars. They support you and your. The um. I'm blanking.
Me too.
With the Healthcare Foundation?
No, it's not the Healthcare Foundation. This is a, a larger grant and they actually help you build the programs. But if there is an organization, like say Lynx wants to apply for this funds, it's available. Like, so we can be a resource to tell people about this grant and I've sent it to Belle.
I'm having a very interesting day. I was trying to like a two, three, one. I'll send it to you. I promise, I promise. It's in my notes. I'll do it.
I will. I'm so sorry I'm blanking on that name at the moment, but. It is an opportunity for a lot of organizations and, and if someone needs help applying for it, we could help them apply for it. That's all I'm saying. I know I sent it to you in the fall.
And so I, um, I'll circle back around. I promise at the end of the meeting, I will send the list out to everyone.
Did you reach for corporation?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop. And we want your list too. We want your list. We would like you to submit a list. We would like you to submit a list to, we're gonna be doing a resource list. We love all your resources. I'm sorry, yeah.
I will make sure that I bring that um to our next meeting.
And there's other people in the community like Daisy is, is doing the girls STEAM, STEM group. Um, looking for donations, things like that to get these girls.
And I like going, I like, I like us participating versus.
Creating beauty.
Okay, yeah. Find the people that have already did the work and have something going and support them.
Great. And also. I mean, I only reached out to Sheila because they do have a youth, they have, yeah, so then I thought that it was something that was available.
Yeah.
Um, um, but I'm not really sure. How did your daughter appreciate? Did she like the program?
Oh, yeah. Me went to graduation and I think it was good.
Yeah.
And I used to, well, when I first kicked that off, I used to participate. And I used to, well, when I first kicked that off, I used to participate quite a bit and send Michigan City High School students to it. When I was back in my former position, I would make sure we had representation from Michigan City. So, and Laporte actually took care of a couple of kids.
So what I'm hearing is that we're really interested in supporting what is already developed in terms of empowerment programs.
Because then you're, instead of having a multitude of different things that are just bare minimum, can help do a little more.
So how do we let them know that this is something that we want to do? Or how do we go about this opportunity?
Each one?
I don't know, like of, of supporting an empowerment program in this, I'm not sure how that works.
I would think you would invite all the people who are doing things and sit them at a table together.
Another roundtable.
Yeah, well, not our commission meeting, maybe a subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then you can ask Daisy and, and different groups to come and sit down and have a discussion.
And see how they need, how they could use our help, what do they need where we can help.
And how can we all share information, resources together?
So that was, that's where we started actually with the International Women's Day. Our whole goal was to get people at the table, to talk about what they do and what's lacking. But I do have a question about that part, because you mentioned that it was, you mentioned it as a health, as health.
Yes, that, yes. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
For, for this first roundtable was on the women's health issues. Okay, yes. And, and to be honest, this roundtable idea came from the initial state commission that had roundtables throughout the state and they learned a lot. So I figured we, you know, it's been 10 years and where are we, what did we learn? Did we institute any of those changes that they brought in, in 2010? Right, so that's, that, that was the initial for these roundtable conversations. So I think another one, I like the idea of a subcommittee that is can bring us back information about certain groups would be great. Would anyone be interested in something sitting on a subcommittee like that?
I could help with that.
And I'll help with that, because I'm super nosy, so I wanna know too.
Great, and I probably will too. Okay, so that looks like it's Sarah Bell, Angie and Christina.
Sarah, that has a nice
Sarah, Sarah Bell.
I know, that's really cute.
Okay, great, so we'll kind of touch base, we're not in a rush on that at this moment, it's just
If it's not too many people, I would be on it too.
Excellent.
No, that would be awful.
That would, and that would, because I don't count, so that works out well.
Yep, okay, great, good.
And Bonnie, I just sent you the sponsorship form.
And I did too.
Okay.
I did too.
Thank you for that brainstorm. So moving on, we're almost done. So, sorry. This, we also through the Indiana State Commission Collaboration, we were connected with the ACLU. And which was just a really great conversation, we shared more of that later. But one of the things that came up is that we, you know, we're initiating this legislative update and they're also gonna be helping us with that. Bonnie.
Well, I'm going to give a legislative update, but I wanna add something about the ACLU because this morning, there were oral arguments in the Indiana Supreme Court on the abortion law that was passed in August and then in September it was stayed by a lower court. So the argument this morning, the state was arguing in support of the near total abortion ban. And the ACLU was arguing that the law violates privacy and bodily autonomy. So hard telling how long it'll take for them to report it, to decide, make a decision and let us know what it is. It'll be at least a few weeks, it's always at least that long, so probably longer. But anyway, we'll be hearing about that, but that was, but that hearing was this morning and, and it was easy to miss that in the because we don't get that kind of news here, like they do in Indianapolis, so. And then, but also, and they are going, the ACLU, the two people that Christina and I talked to are going to give me an update every month, a few days before this meeting so that I can report on any developments in, in laws related to abortion or actually any of their things that they're working on, women's rights or anything. But right now, I wanna report on a handful of bills that have been introduced so far in our legislature this session. And one of them was just this morning and it was just a very pleasant, actually very pleasant to read what it was. It's a Senate Bill 425 called Pregnancy Accommodation. And it would require employers to make reasonable accommodations for pregnant women as long as it doesn't cause undue hardship for the employer. But the thing that I really, really liked about this is it was authored by our Senator Rodney Poll, Democratic. And also co-authored by Mike Bohachek, who is the Republican Senator from, who lives in Michigan Shore. So those two are the ones that authored this one, the Pregnancy Accommodation Bill. Also, in the past week, Senator Poll also authored a bill called Paid Family and Medical Leave Program. Was put into the Pensions and Labor Committee already, assigned to that. Also, a minimum wage bill was introduced in both the House and the Senate. And it was introduced by Rodney Poll in the Senate and Representative Pat Boy in the House. One of them, the Senate Bill would raise the minimum wage to thirteen dollars per hour. And the one that Pat Boy authored would raise it to twelve-ten per hour within three years. There's a bill, House Bill 1224 would allow pharmacists to prescribe oral contraceptives without doctors' orders. They could, and then they could fill those prescriptions for, for the pill or the, or the patch. There is also a bill that would provide grant funding to install lactation rooms in public buildings throughout the state. There is, that's House Bill 1283. There's Senate Bill 311 reestablishing the licensing of abortion clinics and changing the statutes on when abortions can be performed. I think that maybe, anyway, it all depends on what the Supreme Court decides, whether that could even go through. And then also, another one that we talked about, like almost all of this stuff already so far in this meeting. And one of them is the licensing of Pregnancy Resource Centers. And they are also in this bill, they renamed the Dua Advisory Board to something else. So, and that was introduced, it's Senate Bill 256 and House Bill 1302. Liz, Licensing of Pregnancy Resource Centers. And then another one, the last one I'm gonna mention is Senate Bill 22. Senator Bohachek introduced this one and it would remove some limitations on punitive damages in civil rape cases. And then one thing that we might actually be able to do anything about, and I would say since we're, we are the city, we're Angie, we're, we can't lobby. I mean, the Women's Commission can't do that. But if there are any of these laws that are of interest to you, you may as individuals, you know, look them up yourself. Look them up on IM.gov and contact your legislators if you wish, if you're interested in that. And then the only thing that we could do something about, and I don't think we need to, is a Senate Resolution Number Three, which honors women veterans. And it's co-authored by Rodney Poll, by Mike Bohachek and by almost every single senator in the state. So they don't need like a letter of support from us, but I think maybe a resolution, maybe something like that, we could do sometime if there's something. But at any rate, this is gonna pass anyway, honoring women veterans, so.
Maybe we can do something for the city council agenda for March the, that's not a bad idea to put something on the agenda for March the 7th is our first council meeting. Something in, with the Women's Commission and maybe something to honor quality day.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, how does that work? I don't know.
I'll work on it.
Okay, thank you.
We still have a role though. You have a workshop afterwards?
You're talking.
Yeah, it's great.
Resolution down there, that, yeah.
That would be awesome. Wow, that's great, that is really informative and interesting.
And I know there, Fadi, Senator Fadi from down south, he, today, he had announced or presented full day, early childhood education, full day kindergarten. I just saw it. He, he serves in another capacity with the Indiana United Way as our, so I have an opportunity to talk to him on a regular. But he introduced something for all day kindergarten.
That's awesome.
As well.
There are several others too that are not exactly our issues, but, but are similar to that. One would eliminate textbook fees in schools, one would support establishing school-based health centers. And then there's lead testing in children under the age of seven. Representative Boy introduced that one, plus radon testing in school buildings throughout the state. And then safe storage of firearms in homes where minors are present. There's a bill that would repeal the statutory text restricting marriage to be only between a male and a female. There's a bill to establish a Children's Commission in the state, similar to the Women's Commission and funding it.
So then, will they vote on all of these things in this legislative term, or these are just brought up and then we
Generally, there are about 1,200 bills introduced every session. And about a, about a fourth of them actually get signed into law. So there are deadlines coming up, February 27th, I think is the next major deadline that every bill has to have three readings. And if they have not had three readings, by that time they're just off, half of them are gonna be eliminated at that point. And then the session ends on, no later than April 29th this year. This is a long session because they also have to adopt a budget for the state, so, but anyway, but and the ones, the, I would say most of the Senate Bills anyway that were introduced by Democrats are are not gonna make it out of committee. Except, but, and that's why I was so impressed and happy about the Pregnancy Accommodation Bill because it's co-authored by Poll and Bohachek, so. So, but, but most of these won't, won't make it, but, but some of them will. And it's good to, I think, you know, it's good to have, have things like Paid Family and Medical Leave Program. There's only one author at this point, one sponsor, there's, you know, it's unlikely that that'll get passed. But on the other hand, every session that they introduce it, maybe they'll, you know, tweak the words the next time and, you know, keep introducing it until all of a sudden
Or is this a moment where like if enough people litterate to get someone else to sign on, you know, sign on? Then will it, can make it, or is that not how this works?
It should work.
That's how, that's how it's designed to work. The Boise Native Health Coalition has a person, has two people that work over in the State House. That's Vanessa Summers and Anthony Gillespie. And they give us heads up on the bills that's coming and they always tell us, you know, it's good to write a letter. Make sure you talk to your state rep, know who your state rep is. Some of us don't know who our state rep is and, and don't try to know, but that's, that's how we get our help. Because then they know what, what you want back here, and so they will sponsor or co-sponsor something. So they get enough phone calls, they will make a move.
And get a hear, get a hearing, in the hearing. Have it heard there, have a committee made and so, but we have two people on staff down there. And I'll be watching all of these, and I'll find out if any, I'll try to monitor them and find out if they're gonna have, you know, be discussed in committee or have hearings and I mean, let you know if there's anything like that that I find out upon.
Yeah, that's, that's, I really appreciate that this update and it just again reminds me of, you know, the empowerment programs that we don't actually know how it works, that people aren't paying enough attention to know how this works and to get involved. And that that is something we really need to promote is women getting involved.
That's one thing that the people from the ACLU said that they could help with, they could do an advocacy training.
Yes.
Including great, great detail of how a bill becomes a law.
Yeah.
And so they could do a training like that, they'd come up here to do that.
Yeah, so, and we talked, they talked about like next fall, prior to the legislative session. So if we do that, we can keep that on our docket. I think the advocacy training would be really wonderful in our area, and not just for us, but like a larger open session. So, great, so a little over, so city council, please have comments.
I'm not the most, eh?
Okay, great. Commissioners, comments, anything additional?
So, on behalf of Fay Moore, who sits on the Michigan City Black History Month Committee, they had a meeting and they have finalized their schedule of events. And so I will be sending this out. Fay actually sent it out to all of the commissioners today, so we have something to review. These dates, I'm not sure when, but we could also post them on the Michigan City website that is available to do as well. So I made provisions for anyone that wants to take a look at. So please note that the Michigan City Black History Month Committee actually came out of subcommittee work with the social status of the African-American male. And that's, and this committee has been operating and doing a wonderful job. And I'm not just saying that because of all the wonderful people that are on it have done beautiful work over this time. And they put a lot of time, energy into Africa and did a lot of collaborations. And so it looks like their opening kickoff will be of a brunch, which is by invitation only, Black Cinema located at the AMC Theaters. They'll be doing February the 26th. And February the 23rd, they'll be seeing the movies Forty Two and the movie Selma starting at 5:30 PM to 7:30. There'll be a quiz bowl at the YMCA on the February the 11th. Doors open at 9:30, event starts at 9:45 to 11:00 AM. There will be prize money awarded to first, second and third place winners. The Gospel Fest will be held at the Salvation Army, 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM on February the 19th. The Rare Essence Black Expo and Job Fair will be held at a storefront location next to Hollister in the, in the Lighthouse Mall. The Times will be February the 18th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. If you're interested in being a vendor, the vendor fee is fifty dollars. There will be a health fair on February the 11th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the YMCA. Vendors will set up in the gym, there'll be blood and glucose screenings will be done onsite by Franciscan. The La Porte County Health Department will have COVID-19 boosters available. COVID-19 vaccination boosters, we don't need a booster on COVID-19, I misspoke. Each vendor will have time to speak about their organization. There will be an educational panel from 12:30 on the stage in the gym. There will be a talent show on February the 26th from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. That is located at the Holcraft Performing Arts Center. Video auditions will be conducted, they were actually already conducted on the, on the 16th. And there's a dinner and dance event that will be held at, on February the 25th. The doors open at 5:30 till 11:00 PM, location will be at the GAV. Wild West, the forget, the Forgotten Wild West, the Forgotten Black Cowboys. And tickets are available for $30. And it looks like the coordinator for that is Ms. Patricia Harris. There are other coordinators also listed on later. So no slight against anybody. But I will make sure that thi- this has been sent out and it will be made available for public view.
Any other comments? Good. Then we will go ahead and adjourn at 6:44 with our next meeting date at February 16th. And just make sure to read the email if we have moved locations.
Yes, and Drew did acknowledge my email I sent him. And he said that they would be rolling out the red carpet for us.
Excellent. Great, thank you guys so much.